All right. We're going to call to order the December 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call?
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer is absent.
Thank you very much. Before we start tonight, I want to remind everybody that is here to testify tonight to please fill out one of the blue cards in the back and turn it in up here to Brad or Kirsten. If you would like to sign up for our email notification, there's a green sheet in the back, you can sign up for that, and then someone will contact you and you'll be on the Planning Department email notifications. But if you could please fill out the blue cards if you want to testify tonight, that would be much appreciated. Consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda, which are the November 10th and the November 24th Planning Commission minutes. Does anybody have any comments, suggestions, or motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Council liaison announcements. Council President Robinson.
Thank you. You heard tonight about the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan update, and I'm sure you were as impressed as I was at the ultimate outcome recommendation for the two options, and what a great testament to having lots of people from different backgrounds have a say in how they wish to see land developed. And I can't say enough to our consultant, who I think did an awesome, awesome job. She was just phenomenal to work with, and I'm sure she got lots of help from staff. But I just think it was a wonderful process, and I really appreciated it. And I'm happy you got to see it tonight. I don't have anything further, other than we don't have any council meeting for the rest of the year because we're going to be appreciating you as a commission for your hard-earned work and volunteer unpaid positions that you have, and we appreciate every hour that you spend making Sherwood great. And so, we'll see you on the 15th, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Staff announcements.
So, real quick, she announced the December 15th Porzing Appreciations Dinner, that's going to be at the Sherwood Center for the Arts at seven? I don't know the exact time, but I'll send out an email to make sure that, I thought it was seven.
We were supposed to RSVP to Sylvia by now.
Sylvia, six.
Six o'clock and RSVP ASAP.
Please do. Yes, please do. They won't turn you away at the door.
They won't check ID?
No.
They might make you sit on a bleach.
That's right.
Oh, boy, okay.
Although those bleachers are pretty nice. We, you might want to mention the amended agenda. This evening, we sent out an email and we posted it, but...
You can, you can make that announcement.
So, we, the agenda item B tonight, this evening, under New Business, the applicant has requested a continuance, so that will not be heard. It's indefinitely postponed until such time that they're ready to come back and bring it back, so it has been postponed.
So, do you want us to return our paperwork to you, or retain?
No, I would hold on to it because, I mean, the most likely scenario, if they revise their application, we'll have to write something different, so... But, I mean, foundationally, that information's the same, so if you reviewed it tonight, a lot of the information would already be there.
Okay.
You know, so it's some light reading over the weekends when you're laying in bed. January 12th, just a reminder to the public that wasn't here for the work session, we will be having the Planning Commission hearing on the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan, and then we plan to take that to the City Council on February 2nd with a recommendation from you. The plan is available online, and staff is available for the public to call. They can also look on www.sherwoodoregon.gov/sherwoodwest and review the plan and background materials if they have a desire to do so. The City Council conducted their first hearing on the Mandel Zone Change that you recommended positive, that your recommendation was to rezone it. They have held their first hearing, and we'll come back to them on January 5th for a second hearing. Julia mentioned this in her work session, but I'll mention it now. The city put in for three different grants. One of the grants, we partnered with Washington County, Twalton, and some other folks on the industrial land. That's through DLCD, that's Technical Assistance Grant. We did get that. We also put in for a grant request to get our Economic Opportunity Analysis updated. It hasn't been updated since 2007, which was pre-recession, and there have been a lot of things that have changed. We did not get that. And then, we did get a grant through Washington County Tourism Office, I believe, to help put together some, I guess, signage and bike repair stations and things to go along with the Cedar Creek Trail, so there will be some added benefit to having that along with this. And the, I guess, on that DLCD grant, I was told, and just to give you a little background, that there was $1.6 million in requests, and they were only doling out $1 million, so that's for the next biennium. And if you remember, I think I mentioned to you earlier, that they are not funding periodic review in this biennium, they're only doing technical assistance grants. So, we're going to pursue other options through Metro and things to get that going. As you guys all know, we've been updating some of these plans to get ready for an overall Conference of Plan update, and we're just going to keep plugging away so that we can get to that point. And I think, you know, I don't know, for the public, we shared this in the work session, which may not be televised, the last time our Conference of Plan was updated in Sherwood, 2% of the population was represented in that. So, since that Con Plan, 98% of the population that's in Sherwood today came by. That's it, from staff.
So, industrial, because I don't know if the work session that we just had...
January 12th.
We will be having a work session for the industrial uses, and we would like public to attend this work session to provide input.
Yes, we discussed that it will be a public work session format that we've done in the past, where we'll have tables or stations set up either here or maybe upstairs, we'll have to figure that out if logistics don't work out. But that's an opportunity for the Planning Commission to engage more directly with the public, the property owners, the interested parties, to provide feedback that will then shape any recommended amendments to the use classifications. And as we discussed in the work session, that will be January 12th, at, most likely starting at 5:30, but we will get notice out on the website and to property owners and hopefully in the Archer shortly.
Thank you.
One more thing, recreational marijuana. The City Council held a work session, they're considering a couple of options. One would be to put a prohibition on the 2016 ballot, at the same time putting something else on the ballot that would allow the city to tax it at 3%. Starting January 4th, the OLCC will start taking in application requests for grow operations. And as of right now, not having any type of regulations in our system, we would have to treat them as they would be allowed in our industrial land under manufacturing and Just an FYI. So, we're working on a work program for the recreational marijuana.
Before January 4th?
No, I don't think we'll make that date. And I will say, I don't want to speak for the council, maybe Council Robinson can speak about what their discussion was, but, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces to that legislation and what's going on at the state level. And so, I think the city's kind of hoping that the state will step in and allow some type of leeway for communities to work through this process.
I will add that council, at this time, is mixed in how we want to handle recreational marijuana from a policy perspective, recognizing that the voters in each of the three districts in Sherwood, by a majority, voted no on Measure 91, while at the same time, we know the impacts to our police department are going to be increased. If we vote to ban, we don't get any of the tax dollars related to that, so there's some different policy considerations that we're struggling with, and we'd like to have more public input. So, not only will you have the opportunity to get public input, we will also be attempting to get more public input because it's a critical piece for our youth primarily is our main concern, and how best to deal with that. So, we will probably incorporate some of the means by which we've sought advice on chickens, maybe some surveying, maybe some, you know, attendance at public events, things of that nature. So, please feel free to inquire from your neighbors and friends and encourage a discussion because we haven't made up our minds. Obviously, we want to get a lot of feedback.
Thank you. All right, any other staff announcements? All right, moving forward to community comments. And community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda for this evening. I've received one form from R. Claus. The, you have to turn the microphone on, hold it about two seconds till the light turns green. There you go. Good to go now.
Hope you don't get yourself in the same trouble with marijuana. Fro Meyer did with Pallotti. We taught that guy a pretty good lesson about Indians. He might not have liked their religious practices, but he finished his political career over ignoring it. What I want to try to tell, first, I want to tell you that I dislike if there's not procedural due process. So, I got a call from Costco, and they are interested in developing along the highway. So, I told them, "Well, I'll talk to you, but after I talk to the Planning Commission." They have identified most of the problems, but I'm going to try to tell you, in my opinion, where you are, you're in the infilling stage. That's the interesting stage. Stagism, when you had a general plan, is when you start infilling. When I was in British Columbia, they were going to redo the downtown, and I had worked for the group that did the urban planning model for downtown San Francisco, and they'd given us very specific instructions about what the mayor wanted. So, we had Rockefeller there, David Rockefeller in that bank group, and two other groups. And his plan fitted the best on the payback, so we ended up modeling around that. But in the process, as I'm sure Councilman Robinson knows, there was a man named Melvin Belli. He was the tort cling of California. He's the one that turned over contributory negligence for railroads that Holmes had set as pure contributory negligence. And he dug his feet in, and he did not want part of the town, and if you go there, you see it today. It's a remnant. What he tried to tell them was what they were giving up, and in the end, he prevailed because he maintained the assets. I met him one night when he came off of his yacht in a full-length bin coat and not much else on. He knew how to make an impression. But when I went to British Columbia, they asked me to look at Gastown, a guy named Gassy Jack, nobody knew his last name, they murdered somebody in San Francisco, they think, and he opened up Gastown. And when I talked to Killam, the Massey's and the Killams were the wealthiest family next to Pierre and Trelle Trudeau, his father-in-law, he owned half of British Columbia. He asked me, "What about Gastown?" And I said, "You're making a total mistake." He said, "Why?" I said, "Because there are assets here you're not looking at, and you're trying to make it in your image. And just because you own Massey Ferguson and half of the Maritimes doesn't mean you've got any good ideas." And a lot of people were really horrified, and he said, "What do you mean?" I said, "There's cobble rock under the street, and if you're going to build Gastown, respect the architecture, the assets that are there." Killam was a very bright man, and he went back, and they did that. Look at Gastown sometime. Chinatown, we had a similar asset move where we had to establish hearing examiners. What you ought to do, in my humble opinion, which you know is not that, you ought to look at the assets you have in this town. You have the first national wildlife refuge ever established in an urban area. You have a thousand-year pollen records. Anyone like Costco or anybody comes to this town, does not build a trail to those assets, I don't think you're going to let them come in town. Because those are your principal assets, and if you don't look at the assets that are indigenous here, scablands and that, you're not going to do a good land planning job, especially infilling. But you'll have your chance to work with them because they claim, they know all the problems. God bless Costco, right?
Thank you very much for your comments. Oh, I received one more community comment.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays. That should cover everybody. First, I want to say, you know, what a privilege and an honor it was to serve on the Sherwood West, you know, pre-conception plan. It was really educational, it was, and really, it was a lot of fun. I learned a lot, still a lot to learn, and, you know, I appreciate that 50,000-feet view. It'd be interesting to see, you know, 20 years down, down the lane, 50 years down the lane, what it's like. I mean, it'll be very interesting. Again, it was a real pleasure, and I think the word "tool" was used. It is a good tool, I think, that's going to be very beneficial. My second topic is traffic calming devices. That's all, I guess, I want to say about that. I would really appreciate, you know, some more work on that, and, you know, just, I'm beginning to really appreciate the work that goes into all of this stuff. So, and I'm not just, you know, saying this to be saying this to grandstand or whatever, it's not. It's sincere. My third thing I'd like to say, if the city of Sherwood takes or conducts any survey and you get citizen comments, replies, I hope that you take what the citizens say on those surveys to heart. All I have to say is backyard chickens. That was, you know, I think you had overwhelming support, and it's been kicked down the road. So, didn't mean to end on that note, but Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays.
Thank you very much. I meant to announce this at the beginning, and I forgot. I did meet with Julia after our last meeting to try and figure out what, what is missing in the neighborhood traffic calming program, because we do have a process in place if you want to build a piece of, if you want to put a shed in your backyard, we know what the steps are to take it. But we don't know what the steps are if you want to do a neighborhood calming. And I know Julia's really working hard. It is a mechanism that has to be created, and she has to get funding from council and from the budget to be able to prioritize it with all the other things that she has going on. So, I will keep it on my agenda as long as I can keep it going forward on my next steps. If I had an old business spot, I would always keep it up as an old business to make sure that I'm, I'm not losing sight of it, because I do think that there are more than just one street in one neighborhood where people have concerns. And I know Julia has expressed to me her concern that, as a staff, they want to find a solution for this.
Yeah, and I'll add, I mean, in all honesty, I'm clearly not working as hard as some would like, and I, and the part of the problem is, there's a lot of other things that we're working on. We do have some processes, Commissioner Simpson and I, this is one of the things that we talked about, is if people have a complaint, if they have an issue, not everybody knows where to go, and so, we need to convey that better publicly, you know, calling the police, calling the engineering department. There are some processes, if you have issues or concerns. The problem is, we don't have a really good and comprehensive process and program in place that would allow funding, allow prioritization, and that's, that's what needs to be worked on, and frankly, haven't spent as much time as we, we should or could spend on that. But it is very important, and I, I want to say how much I appreciate the diligence of people coming, you know, routinely, just to keep it in front of us, because it is important to, to the community, so...
Thank you very much. All right. I have no other community comments in front of me, so we're going to move on to New Business, which is our public hearing. The public hearing on SP 15-05 Endurance Products Company Expansion is called to order. This public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, 15 minutes. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. Applicant will have 30 minutes, which can, will be split between the presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each, and then the rebuttal from the applicant is the remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing, and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. There'll be final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of this hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the City Council or the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again, with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The Planning Commission will be making the, a decision on this matter. It will, it will not go to the City Council unless it is, if less our final decision is appealed. At this time, I would like to ask the members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, and if you could indicate any nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission member's ability to participate? Hearing none, we will proceed with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. So, tonight, we're going to be talking about endurance products. It's Site Plan 1505. It's a, the site is located at 13990 Southwest Galbraith Road, and if you look up there, it's the, this is Google Maps, and it's the little red indicator. I don't have Connie's little pointer.
We have a red indicator here, though.
Yes. Yes, so, that's the site. You can see there's one building on there now. It, it takes up the entire rectangle. It was a, previously, it was a business that provided things for construction, highway flags and pylons and Jersey barriers and those types of things. And Endurance Products has now purchased the site. The site is about two acres and are hoping to build a 15,550-square-foot expansion to the rear of the existing building. Interesting to note, the project was originally approved under 1996 approval for kilomet instruction, or construction, and they were originally going to place two buildings on there, and they received approval for two buildings at that time, but they never realized their second phase. Vicinity-wise, it is on Galbraith, and to the south, I guess, actually to the west, is Twalton Sherwood Road. To the east, you can see that the Wildlife Refuge is there, and then to the, I guess, north would be Gerda Lane off of Galbraith. Again, the proposal would be to increase the existing square footage of the building from 8,470 square feet to an overall building capacity on-site of 24,020 square feet. It's a 15,050-square-foot expansion. The property is on general industrial. The use isn't allowed use in that area. They do, well, the applicant explained that it's allowed under manufacturing, packaging, warehousing, and processing of food products and chemicals, and if we didn't find it approvable under that use, the other use that it might have fallen under is pharmaceuticals and facilities, up to 50,000 square feet, which are both outright permitted in the general industrial zone. The proposal, because it is a proposal to increase the floor area on the site by more than 10%, triggers a major modification to the site plan, which is subject to 16.90, and that specifically says that when you have a major modification to an existing site plan, that the scope of the review is limited to what's being changed on-site. This is the existing conditions on-site. As you can see, there's the existing building. Up at the front of the site on Long Galbraith, there's some existing parking, there's 21 parking spaces. And then, the rest of it is all fairly, pretty much gravel, and then in these, I guess, the southwest corner is a stormwater quality facility. This map shows the proposal of what they would propose to do. So, the 15,550-square-foot expansion is to the rear of the existing building, and they would provide parking along the side of the building. The dashed tree area or canopy are trees that would be, that would need to be removed to be, to allow this development to occur. They would put the trash enclosure at the rear of the facility, and they have a loading dock into the side of the 15,550-square-foot area that is proposed for warehouse. It's typical industrial development. It's tilt-up construction, and this just demonstrates the elevations that they're proposing out in that area. They are proposing landscaping as required by the code, and that landscaping would definitely improve the site over what it is today. It's very, pretty much that building, some parking up front, and then gravel and storage around the rest of the building. So, the issues that you see in the staff report and then have been conditioned are landscaping. We didn't have enough information to actually provide findings that were favorable for the required landscaping. However, they have enough land that it is feasible that they can meet it. So, we're required to say that if they can't meet it, then we would have recommended denial, but it's feasible that they can meet it by adding some additional landscaping. There wasn't enough area calculations for me to actually do a full-blown analysis on it. We have a minimum canopy requirement of 30% within the industrial area. They counted some of the street trees towards that canopy requirement. We don't allow street trees to be counted towards the requirement. There's some parking things, a condition on parking in here, and specifically to that, I would amend that finding because wheel stops are not required, except at the edge and when you're adjacent to landscaping, but they still need to demarcate the compact spaces that they're proposing, and... And the other issue with parking is, is that, based on their use, which they're adding the 38, or the 15,550 square feet of warehousing, they're not making a threshold. Our, our code says that if you're, if you have a warehouse that's greater than 150,000 square feet, that you can park at a ratio of .3 spaces per 1,000 square feet. Below that, you fall into a general category, and that's 1.6 spaces per 1,000 square feet. I think that they can provide me a breakdown of the building, and we can calculate the parking, because we'll look at the primary use, calculate the parking on that. The secondary use gets calculated at 90%, and any use after that would be calculated at 80%. So if a portion of the building is being used as office, then we can look at that office separately from the manufacturing and the warehousing. So it's feasible that they can meet the parking requirements. They're one space shy of meeting it if they were just required to do the 1.6 per 1,000. Lighting, I did not have a lighting plan to review to make sure that they didn't have fugitive lighting off of the site. And we got comments from Pride Disposal that essentially approved the location, but they wanted more detail and information on how the facility would operate and open. So there's a service provider letter in there. There's a condition related to that. There's condition, standard condition, that requires TVFNR to sign up on the firefighting capabilities based on the construction type. And then we got a comment from ODOT. If you remember back here on the aerial, you can see that behind this is a rail spur that goes behind the building here, and ODOT is charged with, or the ODOT Rail Division is charged with protecting railroads from trespass. And they've requested that a condition be imposed that require the owner to fence that area off to limit any type of trespass on there. Our code doesn't require that standard, but it's worth noting and letting you know that that has been requested, and the applicant speak, can speak to whether or not they want to do that. Staff's recommendation is approval of the application with the conditions placed in the staff report. And I guess the only finding that I would amend would be the finding that was related to the wheel stops, and then in a conversation that I had with Commissioner Simpson about the traffic finding. So early on, we had discussions with the owner on what their anticipated use of that building was. And we have a threshold in our code that says anything that is expected to generate more than 400 average daily trips would require a traffic impact analysis. The city engineer looked at what they were proposing, and based on the addition of, I think it was 12 employees, the applicant can speak to this, did not feel that they would meet that warrant of adding 400 average daily trips, so didn't deem it, that it was necessary to require the traffic impact analysis.
So before you move off of those things that I'm trying to track right now, which, I'm looking at the conditions of approval, and I'm not finding the one for wheel stops, and I'm not sure what language you want to change.
Well, specifically, it's just something that you just need to note, that the wheel stops aren't going to be applicable in this.
It's not a condition of approval.
It's not a condition of approval. The condition of approval is that they need to demonstrate that they have complied with the parking requirements for standards and things. And one of the things that they haven't done, in addition to my discussion on the wheel stops, was they have not demarcated the compact spaces, and they'll be required to do that. And so the condition was general, in that they had to meet the design standards of our minimum parking requirements. So it wasn't specific to, I'm sorry. If you go to...
Well, I see 1617 is the wheel stop conversation with the finding and the recommended condition. I was just looking for the...
Is that, is that inside 1694?
Number five.
Number five? Yeah, I was thinking that's what it was.
Okay, number five, so.
I guess, I guess the, the point is, is you wouldn't necessarily have to amend any conditions at all that are proposed. They still, they would still be required.
The findings, I think, need to be...
That, that finding would need to be amended to say that the wheel stops are not required in that location.
Okay, so as part of this process, you, you can refine the findings as part of the final order once we've had our hearing tonight, correct?
Correct, correct.
And then the conversation that Brad and I had was, when I read through on the traffic impact analysis, it was not clearly, the conversation that had been held previously was, they're adding 15,000 square feet, and we don't think a traffic impact analysis is necessary. But between point, the beginning of the sentence and the end of the sentence, was a conversation about warehouse space and a limited number of employees, and if staff could just modify the finding a little bit that says, based on warehouse usage and an expectation of...
That's page 23, correct?
Oh, sure. Uh, no.
It is.
Yeah, that's not our page 23.
Oh.
It's page 23 of the entire packet, five of 27.
Five of 27, or 23 of the, correct.
So because of the size of the addition, and the proposed unit will not generate more than 400 trips per...
Yeah, be more specific, then?
Yeah, just so that the finding, when someone goes back to look at the record. Which brings up my trick question that I didn't think of until I saw your presentation. Not a trick question, but the stormwater facility is presented, the existing condition has a stormwater facility, and it is going away as part of this application, and I'm not clear...
I believe it's in the engineering comments, and it's related to...
Private stormwater runoff within the subject property shall be collected and conveyed in accordance with Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code. So that's, that covers the fact that the stormwater facility is going to go away completely on page 39 of the packet.
So I, I said, I, a couple of things. So when, I gotta go back to the aerial. So I spoke to the engineer about this. Along, when this whole development was created, there was a stormwater detention swell, or a swell planned along the entire rear of this whole development, adjacent to the rail corridor. And some of the, some of the owners at the time, or some of the people that developed at that time, had recorded private storm easements that were required, and covenants that are required by the city, and some didn't. In this case, it hadn't, he, it hadn't been recorded here. So they have to demonstrate that they can treat the stormwater, and then convey it into that system. And then the treatment can, he's saying that there's a number of ways that it can be treated, and the condition is, is that they have to treat it in consistent with the requirements of stormwater, of Clean Water Services, and it has to be approved, system, and it's a requirement prior to the final site plan. So knowing how the site's developed, it's highly unlikely that they would be putting in a storm pond. So they would be looking at either creating a swell in their landscaped areas, or putting underground filtration system, which are both allowed by Clean Water Services.
Okay, and that's what the recommended condition then covers regarding the DEQ waiver.
DEQ, that's a, that's related to erosion control. So the, let me go to the conditions.
It says, if the proposed storm detention system allows subsurface infiltration, then UIC registration permit or waiver thereof is required by DEQ. I guess I'm just maybe getting wrapped up too much around it. We had a stormwater facility, now we don't, and it says there's no public storm sewer system on the Galbraith Drive. So I was just wondering how it, and maybe I should just ask the applicant how they're going to take care of it. That might, why don't we just do that? Have them tell me how they're going to do it. You don't have to tell me how they're going to do it. So is there any other questions of staff? All right. I don't have any blue cards, so I don't know the applicant's, who's representing the applicant this evening. I'll just call up Endurance Products. And if you could start by saying your name and address for the record, that would help.
I'm Joe Bruner. I'm, I'm the owner, and I live here in Twalton. Physical? I'm sorry, yeah, I live in Twalton. My business isn't Sherwood.
You can, you can give us your business address, that's fine.
Business address is 13990 Southwest Galbraith Drive.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Gellows, David Gellows Architect LLC. 22815 Southwest Miami Drive, Twalton, Oregon.
All right, and so the way the hearing works is you'll have 30 minutes for your presentation, and then we'll have proponents and opponents testify, and then the remainder of your 30 minutes is available for rebuttal. And if, if we ask any questions in the middle, it does not take away from your time, so.
I don't think we'll need the full 30 minutes, but thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for their complete and very thorough report. We always appreciate the assistance staff offers to help us navigate through the pre-application process, and of course, what we are here for today, the hearing and the site plan review processes. I would like Mr. Bruner here, Joe, to explain just a little bit, so you have some context of what the nature of the business is. It's not really pharmaceutical. It's a dietary supplement, and they produce the, the product right in, or they will produce the product right there in the warehouse that we're proposing. But it's a very interesting business, and I just think it'd be helpful for you to understand the context of why he chose this site and the nature of the business.
So we started our company in 1976, and for 41 years, we've been leasing and building in Tiger, Oregon. We manufactured dietary supplements, primarily a vitamin tablet manufacturing facility, or a dry facility. We've been, we specialize in extended release, sustained release technology, and we've built several products around that technology, and primarily the use of niacin, which is our largest selling product. We manufacture for other companies for, for the last 35 years. Endurance Products has its own line. We've been marketing our own brand since, well, since 1985. Marketing through Walgreens Pharmacy, several farm, small pharmacies, and then mail order, and direct mail through the internet, since this came out in the 90s. So our product has 23 published clinical studies proving its bioavailability, as well as its safety and effectiveness. We've, we've taken our Wax Matrix technology and built it in our multivitamins, and our vitamin C, and several other products. Quite frankly, we got tired of leasing a building in Tiger. So we've found the property here in Sherwood. We're, we're very pleased. We, we're looking forward to taking our, our seven to 10 employees that we've had for the last 30 years to bring them into your community, and we're looking forward to moving our plant when we get the plant built.
All right, thank you, Joe. Any questions at this point from, from ownership? Okay. We don't really have any comments that we contest or would like to offer in response to the conditions of approval. We find them all to be acceptable. We appreciate the clarification of the wheel stop issue. I think that will be addressed. To date, we have already addressed, as part of our final site, site plan review process, which will, will be submitted here shortly, taking care of the landscape canopy issue. There, there were a couple of landscape islands that were a couple of square feet shy of the requirements. We've already addressed that. We will label the parking stalls, of course. Stormwater will be addressed subsurface, as is allowed by the city. There is an engineering preliminary diagrams in the supplemental packet, so you could review those. Those were prepared by Westlake Engineers. So when, when it's characterized as if the stormwater facility is no longer there, that's true. The existing one is being improved to subsurface, and that's a choice that the owner had made to simply help in navigating traffic on the site, nothing else than that. So we can still meet all the landscape requirements, but our preference is to apply the subsurface technology for treatment and discharge of the stormwater, and that, of course, is subject to a plan's review and through the public works process. And of course, we will comply with the additional parking stall that has been requested. As Joe mentioned, they've had the same number of employees for many, many years, and so we would never anticipate, in the life of this facility, to ever exceed the 10 or 12 employees. It's, it's quite an automated-type procedure, and the, the project that's being proposed is substantially a warehouse for the matrix and press suites that make the tablets. And then, of course, there's a shipping, and kind of a shipping and mailing operation as well, that's really quite infrequent. So we don't anticipate much traffic on the site, other than those full-time employees that are there. Be happy to address any questions you, you might have. We're here and available to, to respond. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of the applicant before we call for public testimony? All right. It appears you have 25 minutes and 20 seconds left for rebuttal after we hear from the public.
Thank you.
I have a R clause.
Robert James clause, 2211 Southwest Pacific Highway. In due degree, I realize this is ultra various in terms of your scope of authority, but the chairman has asked a very interesting question. Now, are all of you aware that the only water we use is what we use on our lawns that are driven off an evaporate transferation? Everything else goes back into the system, okay? Now, the problem is that you're affecting your deep water hydrology and your surface water hydrology. Now, the fish and wildlife can't say anything. It's absolutely in their charter. They cannot come and lobby a council. That simple. They're the smallest agency in the Department of Interior, and they're not going to get involved. But let me try to make a point to you. All of the water that is taken out of Owens Valley is dumped 15 miles out to sea and dispersed by the Metropolitan Water District in Southern Cal. We don't use water. What we do is we put things in it that do not allow point source control, and without point source control, you can't clean water. Once you know what's in the water, you can clean it. Las Vegas is an amazing example, in that several of the casinos over there are now selling water. They bring in their beer, their drinking water. They completely reprocess it, and then put it back in the Metropolitan Water District over there. The right question to ask is one we're not asking. And are you aware that all of our, all of our ponds in this town are meant to accumulate and flush? Do you understand what I'm saying? You accumulate it, and you flush it. We don't try to put it back in the deep water. Now, why is that? Because we've got wells there. We ought to be thinking about it. Running another water line from the Willamette River is a solution, but it's not going to be a solution if you want to have a sustainable environment. Walmart is a classic example. Now, I know you're not supposed to say this at a presidential time, but Hillary Clinton forced them to build the most environmentally conscious big box. They would have built it here if we'd asked them to. We didn't ask them. Of course, we didn't know it was Walmart, so how can you ask them? But the point I'm trying to make to you is, they could have cleaned that water, because that that comes off of a roof is clean. That that's in a parking lot is going to pick up harder car drips. You've got to get it out of it. But we are not looking at the stage, and believe me, Diane Tanaguchi Dennis, who runs Clean Water Service, is an expert in this. She really knows what she's doing. But she can't do anything until we start setting policy to build a sustainable environment, and we're not. We're by very nature doing exactly what the period... We're by very nature doing exactly what the Perry and Sewer Treatment Plant does in Los Angeles. We're flushing it. You realize if that water had point source control, what you could build with it? You wouldn't have the carbon problem, for one thing, you'd have forests. You could sprinkle up forests. You could change the whole dynamics of this country. But we're not doing it because we look at water as simply something to use and then flush it. Now, we do a better job in Oregon than in California in some places. But the question you ask is a really good one. Why aren't we looking at something to try with this water that gets treated off the roof, flushing into the deep water for our wells? And the staff will have to have direction from you to do that. They can't do it otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anybody like to speak in favor of or in opposition of? I have no other blue cards, so we can have the applicant return for rebuttal if you have any further comments based on testimony received. All right, they do not. So flipping over to... Okay, so there's no rebuttal, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll take no more testimony from the applicant or anybody from the public, and we'll return to staff for final comments.
So just a couple of things. I did look at their stormwater report, which is in the exhibit A of your packet.
Right.
And it does indicate that they intend to do cartridges, which are acceptable in the city of Sherwood and acceptable by Clean Water Services. So Craig just didn't specifically speak to that in his comments.
And we have received statement from the applicant that they are in acceptance of all the existing conditions of approval as outlined by staff. So does anybody have any questions of staff? So if we have a motion, I think Russell's ready.
Somebody else want to try it?
Read it off to us, Russell.
All right, you are the vice chair in charge of important...
Motion.
In charge of motions.
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission to approve the application for P, or SP fifteen dash oh five Endurance Products Company expansion. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and conditions found in the staff report.
As modified.
As modified.
A second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve SP fifteen dash zero five. Is there any further discussion before we take the vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you very much.
Could I make one comment before you leave, sir? First of all, welcome to Sherwood. Secondly, you were here earlier where you understand we're going through a discussion in terms of development plans and procedures for this area and in the industrial area. We would very much like you to attend and participate in that because you are just the kind of industry we'd like to have more of, and we would like your input and your suggestions and ideas. So you're welcome to come. You are now a member of Sherwood, even though you do not live here, unfortunately. Hopefully, we can talk you into that as well. But you're, you're now a member of the community, and we would very much implore you to participate and give us the benefit of your experience and knowledge and insight.
All right, thank you very much. All right, no plays until the summer.
There'll be something in the spring at the high school, but they haven't announced it yet.
All right. Are there any other committee meetings that commissioners need to report on Cedar Creek All right. Excellent. Well, if there's no other business before the commission...
Move, adjourn.
We will adjourn.
What? It's not even eight.
We could have tried to make it longer for at least...